Good morning. I am Danielle McCray, Chairperson for the Budget Appropriations Committee, also Councilwoman for the 2nd District. Also joining us today are committee members, Councilman Paris Gray from the 8th District, and we also have a few members who will be coming in very shortly, as well as several representatives from the Mayor's Office, the City Council President's Office, and now Committee Staffperson Mark Recarant. On agenda today, we have two legislative oversight hearings. Legislative Oversight LO-25-0011, a briefing for the fiscal year 2026 preliminary revenue estimates. And we also have Legislative Oversight LO-25-0011 quarterly briefings from our Bureau of Budget and Management and the Department of Capital, excuse me, Department of Plan and Capital Budget. We are going to start with hearing from our agencies that were asked to attend this hearing, the Bureau of Revenue Collections and Bureau of Budget and Management Research.
Good morning, Chairwoman McCray, members of the committee, Laura Larson, City Budget Director. Thank you so much for having us here today to discuss the fiscal '26 revenue projections as reflected in the preliminary budget that was released last week. So what I'm going to do today is walk through some of the largest revenue sources that make up the city's general fund, as well as some of the revenue streams where we had the greatest, the largest changes year over year. And then I'll wrap up by talking a little bit about the proposal that's reflected in the Mayor's preliminary budget to look at fines and fee structures, to revise those as part of the balancing actions for fiscal '26. So the fiscal '26 preliminary budget reflects a $2.6 billion general fund budget. You can see here on the chart what that looks like in terms of where that money comes from, from the, from some of our larger revenue streams. So you can see that property tax makes up about 46% of the total general fund. Income tax is the next largest share at just over 19%, followed by highway user revenue. And that's, that's an allocation that we receive directly from the state and goes back into transportation-related projects. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to break down a number of these large items and explain what's changing year over year. So first up, in terms of property tax, you can see here on the slide that our budgets and actuals are usually largely in line with each other. And that's because we build the budget based off of assessment information that we have, that we receive in the December before, for the budget that we're planning that will start in the following July. And so because we have that assessment data, it is, it is a much easier revenue stream to predict. There's less volatility year over year, which leads to less variation in terms of budgets, budget versus actual. So in fiscal '26, property tax, as I mentioned, will represent about 46% of the total general fund. It's up by $55.8 million year over year, or a growth of about 4.9%. There's no changes to the property tax rate. For the owner-occupied units, that's, the rate will be just over $2 per $100 of assessed value. And for all other types of property, it's about just under $2 and 1/4 for one, for every $100 of assessed value. The changes that we're picking up here reflect the reassessments that are captured for Group 1. So Group 1 is the northern portion of our city plus downtown. When we look at the triennial growth in that group, it's about 17.4% or about 21% growth on the residential side and about 11% growth on the commercial side. We are projecting that overall real property tax revenue will increase by 6%, but the personal property tax portion of this revenue will grow by about 2.1%. So let's talk a little bit more about our assessment increases and what that looks like, sort of looking back over a number of years, but also in comparison to what's happening across the state. So if we look at the fiscal '26 assessment growth in relation to what we've seen over the last 10 years, you can see that we have, have seen consistent years of percentage increases. And in fact, the largest increases have been in the last three years. So in fiscal '24, 21.6% growth; fiscal '25, 17.9% growth; and fiscal '24, 17.4% growth. And what that's picking up is the overall impact of the real estate boom that, that happened during COVID when interest rates were very low. We saw property values rapidly increase, particularly on the, on the residential side. So while we have seen, we're continuing to see growth in fiscal '26, one of the things that's important to note is that growth here in Baltimore City is actually the lowest when we look across to other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland. And so you can see here in these bar charts what the city growth looks like in comparison to neighboring, to the rest of Maryland. So on the residential side, where we had 20% growth, the statewide average was about 21%. And those counties growing at the fastest rate, they were, their increases were about 23.4%. Now, on the flip side, for the commercial properties, our growth was 11%. The statewide average was about 16.5%. And those counties growing at the fastest clip were at 21.2%. So it really is what's happening with our commercial assessments that's putting us out of line with what we're seeing in the other jurisdictions throughout the state. The other thing to note, particularly around commercial assessments, because as I mentioned, this captures reassessments in Group 1, which includes downtown. So prior to the reassessments that ESTAT did for their annual work that was wrapped up last December, there were a number of large properties that sold in the downtown for very low rates. So what that meant was we had already picked up that lost value in prior year projections. And when properties lose value, we realized that immediately. Compared to when properties gain value, that gets phased in over multiple years on the homeowner's side. But essentially, we're still seeing growth here on the commercial side in the downtown despite the fact that we had some of those large properties sell for the, the lower dollar figure. Next up is transfer and recordation taxes. This kind of falls in line with what we see in the broader real estate market. In contrast to the property tax, this is one where there is more volatility because it's driven by more external factors in terms of what's happening in the broader market. And so you can see back in fiscal '22, which would have captured sort of the end of the, the real estate boom, we, we saw our actuals far out, out exceed the, the normal level that we ever see for this revenue and far outpace what we had projected in the budget. But in fiscal '26, where this revenue stream will represent about 4% of the total general fund, we're projecting that it'll grow by about $12.7 million or just under 14%. Again, no changes to the rates here. The transfer, the transfer tax is about 1.5% based off of the value of the transaction. And the recordation tax is 1% based off of the value of the transaction. What we're projecting here is that we're going to see sort of a leveling out in terms of activity, which is consistent with what we're seeing in fiscal '25. But properties are continuing to grow in terms of their overall value. And so if we look at the, at the period of July through December of calendar year 2023, the average home price was about $253,000. If we look at that same data set for the first six months of fiscal '25, which would have been July of '24 through December of '24, the average home price was about $265,000. So we are anticipating that those prices will hold and continue to, to grow at the same pace that they have been happening. The other thing that will happen here is that if we do see interest rates start to come down, we will see this revenue stream pick up because as homeowners consider whether or not to refinance their mortgages, if they do come back into the market to try to bring down their mortgage rate, that refinancing would be subject to the transfer and recordation tax as well. Next up is income tax. So as I mentioned, income tax represents just over 19% of our total general fund budget. We're projecting that it'll be up by about $33 million compared to 25 or 7.1%. The rate here is unchanged at 3.2%. That is the, the current statewide maximum. What we are reflecting here is the continued increase in sort of the overall allocation that the city is receiving through the state's income tax allocation. And what that is being driven by is that we're seeing the number, the local filers here in the city are, on average, filing higher income tax claims. When we look at the breakdown of filers in our city in terms of how many we have by different income brackets, it's, filers under 30,000 is where we are losing the number of filers. And it's all the brackets above 30,000 where we see growth. And so as, as those local filings are up, the city receives a higher share of the, of the revenue. One of the things that is very, very important to note when it, when we talk about income tax is that this is a revenue stream that we are reviewing and monitoring the projection. And we may revise this projection when, before the Board of Estimates acts on the budget in early May. Our projections here are based off of data that we had as of January. And so it does not pick up any disruptions in the, in the federal labor market and some of the updated revenue projections that are coming out of the state as they sort of adjust their revenue forecast based off of what we are seeing happening in the state's unemployment market. Next up is highway user revenue. So in fiscal '26, this revenue will represent about 10.4% of the total general fund. It's up by $37.2 million or just under 16% year over year. In fiscal '26, we will receive 12.2% of the statewide HUR collections. That is the fourth of a five-year increase in terms of the city's HUR allocation. That higher allocation is slated to sunset after fiscal '27 based off of the temporary increase that was secured in Annapolis a couple of years ago. Our projections are in line with what the state is projecting for HUR for fiscal '26. One of the things to note, and you'll hear me talk about this more when we talk about '25 second quarter, is that at a statewide level, we are seeing drop-offs in fuel tax revenue as well as vehicle registration. And so that is flowing through in terms of what can be allocated back to local jurisdictions. I do want to note that nearly all of the increase that we're receiving year over year from HUR is going into the Department of Transportation's capital program. When we look at the, the full HUR allocation for fiscal '26, 35% of that allocation will be dedicated to DOT capital. Next up is parking and tourism-related revenue. So this includes our, our parking revenues as well as the hotel tax. So these items represent about 2% of the city's total general fund. We're projecting that they're going to be down by $3.3 million year over year or a decline of about 6%. That, our revised forecast is calibrating a number of the initiatives that were factored into the fiscal '25 budget. So if we think back to fiscal '25, we increased parking-related revenue by just over $6.2 million to reflect a number of new initiatives that were going into place. That was implementing the license plate reader technology to increase enforcement of the residential parking program. That also reflected us turning back on late fees for parking citations. Those had been paused since the start of the COVID pandemic. And then there were some minor modest changes to the parking tax legislation. What we're seeing through the first half of fiscal '25 is that some of the revenue forecasts that we had for those initiative changes was higher than what we're actually seeing in terms of new revenue. So part of the reason why we're bringing revenue down in fiscal '26 is to adjust in terms of what we're actually seeing for those new initiatives. In terms of hotel tax, that is largely flat year over year. We continue to see that our demand is increasing and that average nightly room rates are increasing. And just a reminder, 40% of our hotel tax revenue goes back to Visit Baltimore to support their operations. Next up is state aid. So this represents about 4% of the city's general fund. It is down by about $6.2 million year over year or a decline of about 5.8%. The, the largest, so as you can see, this revenue stream is, is just over $100 million. The largest portion of that is the income disparity grant that the city receives. And so in fiscal '26, that's going to be about $79 million. That's the max that the city can receive under the current parameters of that grant. So our allocation from that grant next year is unchanged at fiscal '25. It's flat year over year. Why we're seeing the decline here is related to actions that were part of the governor's original budget and ultimately ended up staying in the budget. The city was receiving a grant that helped to defray pension costs for teachers. So we were receiving just over $10 million annually. This grant goes back many, many years. So as part of the budget, the state budget balancing actions for '26, they're phasing out that grant to local jurisdictions. And so our grant is going from just over $10 million to just over $5 million. The other portions that make up state aid would be a local health operations grant. That's going up by $1.6 million. The library aid portion is going down by $2.8 million. And the grant we received for the War Memorial Building is going down by $5,000. Next up are traffic cameras. So this would include our network of speed and red light cameras, not including I-83. Those I-83 cameras are part of a segregated fund. Revenue from those I-83 cameras goes back into the cost of operating that program as well as funding capital improvements in the I-83 corridor. In fiscal '25, this revenue will represent just over 1%. It's up by $1.6 million or, or just under 6%. What, the increase that we are taking into account here is based off of annualizing new cameras that were put online in fiscal '25 as well as deploying six additional cameras next year. And then we will also be redeploying some of our speed cameras to new locations that better align with pedestrian and traffic safety outcomes. Next up is investment earnings. In fiscal '26, this will represent 1% of the city's total general fund. It's projected to be down by about $17.2 million or a decline of about 41%. What we are taking into account here is that interest rates would continue to come down. So in fiscal '25, we're projecting an average interest rate of about 4 and 1/2, 4.4%. We're projecting that that would decline to 3.9% in fiscal '26. The other thing that's happening here is that the city will continue to see a lower cash-on-hand balance as we move through fiscal '26. And that's related to the spend-down of ARPA. So just as a reminder, that full $641 million that the city received from ARPA, we got that in, as two large payments from the Department of Treasury. And we were, as part of the parameters around the ARPA program, we were able to invest those dollars. The, the returns on those short-term investments were allowed to go back into local governments' general funds as, as part of however they budget for investment earnings. So what we're taking into account is that as we get closer to that ARPA spend-down deadline, our cash on hand is going to come down as that one-time revenue gets deployed out into our community through different programs and projects. The other thing that I will note here is that this is just a big caveat. So our projection is based off of what we have been hearing from the Federal Reserve in terms of their strategy to try to get interest rates lower. What the strategy is now in terms of how tariffs are flowing through and, you know, how that throws, does or doesn't throw our economy into a recession, we don't know what the Fed's reaction to that is going to be. And so this is another item that is just very dependent upon what's happening in Washington. And we're going to just have to react to information as we receive it. Next up is energy taxes. This represents about 1.4% of the city's general fund, projected to be up by $700,000 or 1.9%. This is a, a revenue stream that's largely flat year over year. There is a statutory increase to reflect an annual inflationary increase based off of, to these taxes. And so, you know, we're taking into account that, that adjustment that's required. There is no change to the, no major change that's anticipated in the consumption levels here. And so finally, just to wrap up, as, as part of the Mayor's budget balancing strategy that folks may have heard me talk about last week is he proposed a, a new revenue package of about $26.6 million. This is a targeted set of proposals that is an effort to avoid any sort of broad-based tax increases for our residents and businesses. And so what you see us targeting here are items where the city is out of line with neighboring jurisdictions and/or we haven't updated these items for many years. And so as I go through this list, again, the, the preliminary budget anticipates additional revenue. I do just want to note that a number of these items will require council approval to put them into place. And so the plan is that we would be initiating that legislation after the council completes their work on the '26 budget. So just to walk through these individually, first up is landfill tipping fees. So we are recommending to increase that rate to $135 a ton. That will bring our city rates in line with surrounding jurisdictions. It will also allow us for a full cost recovery model for that service. This fee was last updated in 1993. We're also proposing an increase to the EMS transport fee. So under this proposal, that fee would be increasing by 20%. That's a stepped fee based off of the level of care that you're receiving. So this proposal will bring the city's EMS fee in law, in line with national peers in terms of other large urban fire departments providing ambulance services. The last time the EMS fee was increased was in 2018. We project that this increase will generate about $5.5 million annually. Next up is increases to a variety of citywide fines and fees. In total, we're estimating that these increases will generate about $6.5 million annually. I'll talk more about each of these proposals in a couple of minutes. Next up is traffic cameras. You just heard me talk a little bit about traffic cameras. We are projecting additional revenue here based off of the redeployment that I was just mentioning. The taxi tax, we're proposing to increase from $0.25 a ride to $0.38 a ride. That would be on traditional taxis as well as rideshare services like Uber and Lyft. This would be the first increase to this tax since it was put in place a number of years ago. And we're estimating that that would generate just under $2 million annually. And then finally, the grocery bag tax. So currently, that is set up to be a, a cost share between retailers and the city, where retailers get to keep 4 cents of, of the 5-cent charge and the city gets 1 cent. So the proposal here will be to shift that to a 50-50 cost share. That will generate just under $250,000. So I want to spend a couple of minutes just talking about that fine and fee item in, in a little bit more detail. So in terms of, of fines, they represent 1.5% of the general fund budget. And actually, I just want to note that should say citywide fees. We'll talk about fines in a second. So first up for citywide fees, they represent about 1.5% of the city's general fund budget. We're, we're projecting that these will increase by $4.5 million as part of that, as part of that revenue strategy. So currently, the city has a network of over 2,000 fees on, on our books. These are either paid annually or they're paid every time a specific transaction needs to happen. The last time we did a comprehensive review of all these fees was in 2008. So currently, my office is working with city agencies to review the different fees that are managed by each of our different agencies to look at the actual cost of providing the services that support those fees and then to provide different recommendations about what potential new fee structures could look like. As part of this review, we're also putting in place recommendations around how we review these on a, on a cyclical basis so that we don't get way behind like what we have here and where we have to do everything all at once. We are starting our work by targeting a number of, sort of, where we have the largest number of fees. So we're going to be looking at housing code enforcement, business licensing, rental registrations, transportation and parking-related charges, and then boarding and cleaning fees. Our goal is to complete that analysis over the summer so that we could bring back the specific recommendations of which ones we would be increasing in the fall. And then finally, for citywide fines. Fines represent about 1.4% of the city's general fund. The '26 recommendations anticipate increasing, increasing revenue by about $2 million. Again, we have a, a large inventory of fines and penalties that we can assess. It's, it's smaller than the number of fees, but many have not been adjusted for many years. In some cases, they haven't been adjusted since the authorization to begin assessing the fine was put on the books. And so what we'll be doing here is a targeted review of fines that are on the books to really look at items that impact the quality of life for residents and for businesses and look for opportunities to update those fines so that we can sort of use that as a tool to deter some of that behavior. So we'll be really focusing here on some of the environmental and sanitation violations that are issued by our code enforcement team in housing. We'll be focusing in on our parking enforcement-related fines and penalties and then also looking at other fines and penalties that are assessed by DOT in the space of towing and storage fees and things like that. Again, just want to reiterate, this is not a blanket increase to everything. This is going to be a targeted review of each of these individual fines to look at where there are opportunities to make adjustments. Our revenue projection assumes that both the fines and the fee reforms would be in place by October so that we would realize about 3/4 of the, of revenue from 3 of the quarters in fiscal '26 and then we'd be able to annualize that as part of the '27 budget. So with that, I can pause and take any questions that folks may have regarding any of these items.
Thank you, Director. First, I want to acknowledge Vice President Middleton, who has joined us, our Council President Cohen, who has joined us, and Councilwoman Ramos as well. And Council President Cohen, did you have any comments or questions at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Larson, for your hard work in a really challenging time on this budget. I'm extremely concerned about any broad-based fees that would hit the residents of Baltimore. We are in an unprecedented time where the tariffs are wrecking the national economy. We saw just yesterday the state budget, which did include fines and fees that will hit everyday Marylanders pretty hard. And in this moment of real volatility, I worry that additional broad-based fees will hurt Baltimore and will hurt the people that we are trying to lure and support and home-grow within our city. And so I understand where we want to raise revenue as it relates to something like illegal dumping. It makes sense, go as high as we can. If someone breaks the law, there should be a significant penalty for doing that. But when it comes to these broad-based fines and fees, when it comes to something like a bag tax or a taxi tax or, or just arbitrarily raising them, that is going to be extremely hard for me. And so I wanted to understand why we've decided to go in this direction for what, in the grand scheme, does not amount to a particularly large amount of revenue. I mean, this is not the same situation as our colleagues in Annapolis face where, you know, 3.3-something-billion-dollar budget deficit. So why take it out of the pockets of regular Baltimoreans?
And great questions. I think one of the things that's important to note in terms of the broader budget balancing strategy is, you know, the city was faced with an $85 million budget shortfall that had to be balanced. As part of the initiatives that I just walked through, that represents about a third of that total package. So for every dollar of new revenue that we are proposing, there's $2 of expenditure savings that we identified as part of the larger package for balancing the '26 budget. Where we looked to focus in on revenue increases was, again, trying to take a targeted approach to avoid a lot of these broad-based increases that you're talking about. So there's no broad-based increase to the property taxes or income taxes or transfer and recrodation taxes that would hit the majority of our residents here in the city. Instead, what we're focusing on here are things that haven't been updated for many years and that are out of line with either the cost of providing that service or out of line with some of our neighboring jurisdictions. And so that's why, especially with the fee increase, you're going to see us go through that network of fees and really look at how much does it cost us to provide this today? And how should we set up a new fee structure moving forward? So what that could mean is, just like our EMS fees, where we have a tiered level. If you are receiving a basic life support transport to the hospital, you're going to pay a lower rate than if you're receiving very acute care from our department. And so what you may see come out of our recommendations around some of these citywide fees is opportunities to tier them, again, to be more targeted in terms of how we are trying to realize additional revenue. In terms of the taxi tax and the bag fee, on the bag fee, what we know is that while there are other jurisdictions that have that fee, the way ours is structured is a little bit different. So actually, this 50/50 structure brings us in line with some of the other jurisdictions that have it. In terms of the taxi tax, that's just another one that hasn't been updated for a number of years. And so it was just an opportunity to look at a targeted place that hasn't been adjusted for many years in exchange for having to pursue any sort of broad-based increases to taxes.
No, and look, I appreciate that. You know, and let me just try to ask this a slightly different way. You know, I think across our city, we're seeing Baltimoreans struggle, whether it's BGE bills, whether it's our relatively non-competitive tax rate compared to property tax rate compared to other jurisdictions. You know, we're finally seeing our population start to at least trend in the right direction, albeit a very, very modest trend. But then, when we throw on rental registration fines, when we throw on business license fines, to me, that's going to hit either our most vulnerable residents, in that folks that rent, or our businesses. And we know, again, seeing what's happening with our meds and eds right now, with the NIH, with the just assault that we're seeing on Hopkins and UMS and all the other medical spaces, that this is a time where Baltimore needs to grow its business economy. And so, again, just trying to understand why do something that could potentially message to average residents or businesses that either are here or might want to come here, that we're going to make it even less competitive?
So I actually, thank you so much for that question, Mr. Chairman, Faith Leach City Administrator. I actually think that question is very nuanced and is more appropriate for the administration rather than the Budget Office, as the administration provided guidance for the development of this budget. So, one, I think, as I mentioned, we have to take a more nuanced approach when we talk about fines and fees in particular. So you mentioned the rental registration fee. That doesn't impact renters. It impacts owners of properties that they want to rent. And also with the rental registration fee in particular, that is not one that we have said that we are going to increase. What we have said is that we are going through a process by which we are going to evaluate all of the city's fines and fees, and from there, we will determine which ones need to be updated. Excuse me, I was like running upstairs.
Understood, but my understanding, Administrator, is that in most cases, that would then be passed on to the renters? If we were to...
No.
You think we would charge an additional fee to a rental license and that it would not get passed on to...
No.
Folks that rent?
As an owner of properties, that's not how that fee works, nor is that a fee that we have said that we are going to increase. So I don't want to spend time on that particular fee because it is not one that we have specifically said that we're going to increase. And I want to be very clear to the general public about what this budget is and what it is not. And so we have, there are specific fines and fees that we have called out, but what, more importantly, what we have said is, the city of Baltimore is providing services where we may or may not be charging the amount of money that it costs to provide said service. We have fees that haven't been updated since the '90s and the '80s. We are going through a process where we're going to evaluate every single one of our fines and fees and the totality of the fine and fee structure. Then from there, we will determine which ones need to be updated, but it is not by any means a broad-based fee increase.
Understood. I'm just reading off of the slides that we were provided.
And it says that we're going to increase bag fee, it says that we're going to increase rental license fees?
The proposal is to move forward with targeted license fees by services prioritizing housing code enforcement, business licenses, rental registration, transportation and parking-related charges, boarding and cleaning charges.
Yeah, targeted.
Right.
So it did not say, that does not speak to, nor does it say that we are going to increase rental license fees. It says that we will look at targeted. All of this is targeted. Again, this is why I want us to look at this budget and fee increases and fine increases from a very nuanced lens and nuanced approach, and we should take it fee by fee and fine by fine, which of course, we would have to work with this body before we can make those types of increases. And so I welcome that conversation when we bring forward the study to this body.
Understood. I'm not clear what the difference between targeted, maybe I'm not understanding...
Targeted means that it's not broad-based.
Right.
So we're going to target, what we have decided to do with this budget is not to take a broad-based approach. What we have decided to do is to target nuisance things that impact the quality of life for our residents. So that's why you see things like code enforcement. That's why you see things, we talked about illegal dumping. That's why you see things like our solid waste fees, for example, right? These are challenges every day. When you and I and all of us walk in community, we hear complaints from residents about illegal dumping. So we want to look at that fine and see what we can do to deter that activity. We hear about nuisance issues when it comes to sanitation. And so we want to be able to look at that fee. How can we use that fee to deter that type of activity? Also, when you look at, again, transportation and parking-related issues, we know that our residents have been asking us for more parking enforcement and that we need to do a better job at parking enforcement, and we want to make sure that our streets are safe. And so we're going to look at that fee. It's not going to be outsized in comparison to our peers. It's actually going to balance us between our peers. I got a ticket in Annapolis a few weeks ago. I took a picture of a ticket I got in Annapolis and a ticket I got in the city of Baltimore, same infraction, and there was at least a $30 or $20 difference. And it was easier to pay the ticket in Annapolis than it was in the city of Baltimore. I sent that to our budget director and I also sent it to our transportation director. So we have an opportunity here in the city of Baltimore to deter nuisance behavior that our residents have been really challenging us to address, and at the same time, put the fines and fees more in line with our peer jurisdictions.
No, understood. And again, I think where there is alignment is, let's say, illegal dumping, or you mentioned parking, right? We hear that all the time. I would say where I am struggling is around some of the suggested things such as business licenses, rental registrations, bag tax, and others that do not seem targeted to dissuade nuisances, just seem like additional fines and fees. And what I would say is that we are, as everyone in this room is well aware, in a very precarious fiscal climate, both locally, across the state, and nationally, and I question whether now is the time for anything outside of, to your point, something that deters a behavior that Baltimoreans are fed up with.
And I think, to that point, Council President, you know, as I was mentioning, as part of this review, we're also going to look at the structures that are in place for these. So the items that were listed on the slide just represent where we have the largest number of fees, and so that's where we're starting, just in terms of, we have the highest number of volume there. What we may see is that, like I said, we're going to be looking for opportunities to implement tiered structures so that maybe you might even see, based off of how that comes out, that average residents might actually end up paying less because we have an opportunity to tier things differently based off of the nature of the service. And so, again, just want to be targeted here in terms of how the city administrator is talking about it. The reason why we have this sort of broader category around fees in particular is because we want to ensure that we are approaching this based off of, here's how much it's costing us to provide this service to support this fee. And so here are opportunities to look at different ways to structure the fee. And so we may, as part of that, identify more progressive ways that we could structure it versus how our fees are structured today.
I'm going to yield my time, but I appreciate it, Madam Director, Madam Administrator. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is it possible for me to offer two very quick things?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. So the two additional things I want to offer, one is around collection of fees, which I also think is critical. So during, a few months ago, I actually had the Director of Finance, as well as our B-SIT Director, look at all of the agencies where we might be collecting paper checks or cash. So one of the challenges that we experience in the city of Baltimore, of course, we've come a very long ways when it comes to our electronic record-keeping and our payment collections, for example, but we've also been digging into the systems that we have to actually collect payment and what our payment collection rates look like across the board. And so we've gone through, we've done the analysis, we've bought on Paymentis, which I think you've probably heard me talk about before. And so we're looking at more opportunities to implement online payments, more opportunities to limit cash collection because we still do have services where people provide cash in person. And of course, there are security challenges with that and other challenges that that presents. So I don't want this to be that we are just looking at raising fees. We're also looking at how we can better collect the fines and fees that are already in place. I just wanted to offer that for the body.
No, I appreciate that. And I will say, you know, we had a very robust conversation at the BOE that you were part of around some of the challenges with collecting on water bills that has led to, you know, just money that is left on the table. So I do appreciate that piece. Again, where my concerns lie are just in the very tough moment that Baltimoreans find themselves in and wanting us to be the most competitive city for people to live and do business in the country. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Actually, thank you both. I actually wrote down, because I had questions about the collection rates and what we're going to do to increase collection rates if we're moving in on increasing some of these fees. I want to, but first, I want to follow up on, and I'm sorry, y'all, I'm, let me say this. The first thing, I'm going to give two comments before I forget them. One thing that Council President Cohen said, it did stand out to me, and I may have misunderstood what you said, but one thing I do know is that businesses, if they're getting additional fees, they're typically going to put that on to the consumer. They got to make money. So if we, I want to make sure that we're mindful when we're looking at, and I know you said it's targeted, you didn't say exactly what you're doing yet because you haven't completed the study, but we do want to make sure that you're mindful about the fees that we're putting on to business owners because they will be passing them on to the consumers, our residents, on to us, on to all of the folks who here, who live in the city, who actually, you know, give money back to the city. That's that thing. A follow-up to Council President's, to his point, in the summer, you should be completed with the comprehensive fee study, correct?
Yes, that's our goal.
And you're looking to roll some of these out in the fall?
That's correct.
Okay. So my question would be, why would, why wouldn't you guys, like, delay or until it is completed? You have a full, a full idea of what you're going to be actually putting the fees out for, and knowing that I'm a person who's constantly saying, I want folks to be proactive and urgent with items. So I'm not saying the fall is wrong, but has anybody thought delaying this possibly for a fiscal year, especially since this, some of the stuff is likely going to impact residents, actually all of it will, impact residents? So what is the reasoning from the summer to the fall and not a delay?
So our thinking here is that, you know, we believe that we will have the analysis done, like I said, in the summer months, and we'll be prepared to bring the recommendations, and we can begin to receive portions of the revenue in fiscal '26. So again, it was part of the broader strategy for how we were working to balance the '26 budget, again, where we were identifying $2 of savings for every dollar that we were identifying in terms of revenue generation. And again, where we were identifying opportunities for additional revenue generation was in to avoid having to discuss any sort of broad-based tax increases.
I'm not somebody to tell somebody to slow down. Again, I'm always up here talking about urgency when we do things, but I know you guys are going to be thoughtful and mindful about how these are rolled out, and also know that they have to come back to us. Going back to the collection rates, have you guys identified how we're going to increase collection rates? Some of our collection rates are not where they should be, but we're going to be increasing fees, which means we may have additional items that are just lingering out there that's just never getting paid. So what strategies, or what are you guys thinking through on how we're going to increase collection rates outside of what you spoke about earlier?
Yes, ma'am, I can take this one. So yes, we've actually been thinking a lot about collection rates and looking at our collection rates across the board. A part of it is also looking at our processes. So for example, with road permits, we actually had to completely change that process with how we actually collected the fees related to road permits so that you weren't getting your permit before you actually paid for your road permit, for example. So in some cases, it is making sure and evaluating our processes to ensure that payment comes before the actual service is provided. But then, for specific collection strategies, there are a couple of things. We want to ensure that we're not predatory. So we are very sensitive to the challenges that our residents face, and we're very sensitive to the cost of living and all of the things that are happening at the state and the federal level. But we are looking at things like whether or not we should be working with collection companies to actually go out and help us collect on old or bad debt. We generally don't do that. Most of our collections are done in-house. In certain instances, we'll work with collection companies, but generally, we don't employ that as a practice. We also generally don't refer residents or owed debt to creditors, generally. That is something that also could be considered as well. Also, we want to do things like look at payment plans for our residents that might be behind on fines, fees, and penalties that are of larger sizes so that we're allowing our residents... so that we're allowing our residents an opportunity to pay their bills over time. Promise Pay and DPW for water bills has been incredible in allowing our residents to, again, pay their bills over time. And so it's looking at more of those strategies like we use with Promise Pay, working with collection companies as needed, having internal dedicated collection teams that are more aggressively going out to collect on bad debt and ensuring that we're able to better collect for our residents. But again, these are all the things that we've been looking at and talking about. But we would determine the specific strategy related to what the fine and fee is. So we would, it wouldn't be a broad base, everything goes to collections. It would be determined based on the type of service that's provided and the debt that's owed.
Vice President.
I just wanted to chime in on, just on the same subject as I was listening to my colleagues, which, you know, I understand your concern and definitely support that. This, listening to all this reminds me of when we started Transform Baltimore with the zoning code, which, you know, that was, hasn't been done in like 40-some years. And it was a very intense changeover that involved the community tremendously. And I think, I look at this as a similar Transform Baltimore overview, except for zoning code, it's on fees and fines. And I really, you know, the community involvement is important. Having small town halls, that should be in play. I think data collected from 3-1-1 is very important specifically, you know, with housing code enforcement. I made a code, I made a note here as far as when I saw the EMS transportation fees and when I was going through, helping my husband at the time through the problems he was going through and did experience some of that EMS transport fees at the facility that he basically was staying in the last 10 months of his life. And that's something that really, you really got to pay extreme positive attention to because it's affecting older adults. And, well, really, everything here is going to affect older adults. And just kind of keep that older adult population in mind. But this is also going to involve planning and council services and just, you know, I know you have this study that you mentioned is going to be completed in the summer, but, and that study hopefully will be presented to the council as we move forward in doing some of these community events and so on. I'd like you to respond to all that and if all those things are being considered.
Certainly, definitely receive the feedback. You know, as we move through the study, you know, we can definitely look at how we leverage different community engagement opportunities to talk to folks about what we're doing and to get their feedback around the proposals. Would also be happy to provide briefings to the council regarding the results of the study and what we found in terms of opportunities and also talk a little bit about what our approach is going to be moving forward in terms of how we update these items. Also, I just want to note that as we look to go through this, there's also opportunities, you know, many of these haven't been looked at for many years. And so they probably, we also don't have necessarily protections in place for older adults. And so going through this process is also going to give us the opportunity to look at the reforms that we want to put in place, certainly from a revenue generation perspective. But we're also going to be able to have a conversation about what protections do we need to think about as we implement some of these reforms and new structures? And looking forward to partnering with all of you as we have those conversations.
And thank you for bringing up the paper check and cash because I've found that that also seems to be a problem with the EMS fees. And, you know, working with outside people and then just the process of when they get the message that some money is owed to the fire department. It was just a total wake-up call to that whole process when you experience going through something like that. So thank you. I just wanted to add my two cents on that piece.
Thank you.
Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really quickly, can you go, I guess, talk a little bit more about, I guess, quarter two in the income tax? There were, there was a decline of 194 filers. You also said that there was a decrease in the number of filers that make under 30,000. There was an increase of over 30,000. Does that, but the unemployment rate increased as well. Does that mean that the folks that are being employed in Baltimore or that we're collecting those income taxes from, are they more gainfully employed in a sense? And like, where's that employment coming from? And where do you see it possibly changing with the federal, what's going on federally?
Yeah. So if you, I'll refer you to the budget documents where we described the income tax. We include a table that shows the number of filers by bracket. So looking at the '26 book, the number of filers making less than 30,000, there were, there was a 5,500 decline in the number of those filers. For filers making between 30,000 to 59,999, there was a 475 increase in the number of those filers. Individuals making about 60 to 150,000, there was about a 3,400 increase in the number of those filers. Individuals making between 150 to 499, there was an increase of about 1,400. And then filers making more than half a million, there was a 48 increase. This is consistent with the trends that we've been reporting around income tax, going back to the fiscal '24 budget. There's a couple of things that could be happening here. Individuals could be making more money and we see folks moving up in terms of falling into another one of those brackets. That also could be indicative of potentially folks looking to, maybe we're losing folks who are in that income bracket. This is data that we get from the State Comptroller's Office. It's been something that, I don't have a great answer to say like where those, where those filers are going. But in general, we're seeing that the city's sort of overall taxable income is increasing. In terms of what, how this is going to play through based off of what's happening at the federal level. So the way that the, you know, we have a rate of 3.2%. Individuals pay that, it's part of how they pay their state income taxes. And so what happens is the state collects all of the state income taxes. They take that huge pool and then they allocate it back out to local jurisdictions. With what's happening at the federal level in terms of layoffs and anticipating higher statewide unemployment, what's going to happen is the state is going to have a smaller pot of money to allocate and that's how it's going to pass through to us here on the ground in the city.
Thank you for that. I don't know, it seemed just a little weird if we are losing people under 30,000. I mean, we want the social mobility, but if these folks are actually leaving, that can present a problem because that means that folks can't afford to live anymore and we definitely don't want that. And then I have two more questions, so please just bear with me. Could you, and I don't know, maybe CAO Leach, you may probably be better suited to answer this, or someone from DLT. Seeing that you guys are projecting an increase in revenue for the traffic cameras, what different strategies are you guys implementing versus, you know, prior years or prior leadership that can make you guys feel really confident that you're actually going to increase the revenue when it looks like we're just hemorrhaging that money right now?
I can start in a minute, or do you want to?
So the bulk of the new revenue that we're assuming is coming from either new cameras that have or will be deployed in fiscal '26 and then looking for opportunities to redeploy cameras, particularly speed cameras to new locations. What we know with our traffic camera program is that the longer the camera is deployed at a specific location, the fewer the number of the citations that it's issuing. And our theory here is that drivers react to where the cameras are and then, you know, they, they don't speed or run those red lights. But then what we observe is that as, after they get out of the zone of those cameras, you know, there are unsafe patterns that happen. And so first and foremost, our goal of this program is to ensure that we're deploying these cameras in locations that make our roads safer for folks who are walking and for other motorists. And so what we're trying to do here is to look at where we may have a camera that is not contributing to a positive pedestrian or traffic safety outcome and looking at an opportunity where we can put it at a different location where we can ensure that we're increasing those outcomes.
Thank you. And then a final question. How are we as a city going to deal with the increase in illegal dumping because of the increase in the tipping fees? Already, that is one of the things you hear from a lot of small haulers. We, it's too expensive and I would just rather, you know, dump it and keep going about my business than wait in line and have to pay and now we're going to raise the fee. How have you guys thought that through as far as making sure that our folks at DHCD and DPW have the folks there to actually, one, you know, cite it, but then secondly, have DPW pick it up?
So a couple of things. The increase that we're proposing for the tipping fee will be targeted to the large haulers. The fees for the small hauler program are not increasing. So actually, the small haulers won't see an increase at all. The other thing that we know that our colleagues in DPW are sharing with us is our rate is so much lower than the surrounding jurisdiction. We actually have people coming in from outside of the city to use our landfill because they can benefit from a lower tipping fee. So actually, by increasing the fee, you know, that will discourage people from coming into the city who are not collecting in the city, which should have a positive impact for some of these small haulers as well in terms of some of the wait fee, wait times and whatnot. And so we do believe that through, that with this increase, it's not going to, it's not going to result in a major uptick in terms of the legal dumping.
It's a revenue hearing.
Yes.
But Councilman Gray is on it and you probably know where I'm going. If we're looking at that 5,579 decrease with under 30,000. We know that these are legacy residents and we know that they're leaving the city. And that's important to us to make sure that those folks can stay in the city. So if we see these trends and I'm just, I know that the administration, when they see these trends, have some type of plan to mitigate this. You did say, or I want to make sure that I understood you. If changes are coming regarding these projections, it's going to be before this, before it's presented to the BOE at the final budget or, excuse me, when the final budget is presented at the BOE? Because even looking at the increases, we know how much the, the folks who are on the federal side that are getting laid off, that may be placed on administrative leave, we know that average salary, those average salaries are where they're at. We know that they fall in these ranges where we're seeing the increases. So if your data is from January and this stuff is happening and you're getting these numbers in, we're just not going to know until the final budget is presented?
So we're working in close partnership with the State Comptroller's Office as well as Mako to, who's helping to provide guidance to local jurisdictions for how they should think about their income tax projections for fiscal '26. Our, the potential timing of any adjustment to this revenue forecast would happen before we finalize the budget recommendations that will be acted by, acted on by the Board of Estimates on May 7th. And so the budget that the council receives in terms of the ordinance of estimates will be based off that final projection as of where we are in May. It's a very fluid situation because as you just mentioned, Chairwoman, some of these individuals who are on administrative leave, they actually are not eligible to make unemployment claims yet. And so some of this is, we are not going to have perfect answers when we're adopting our fiscal '26 budget. And so we just have to make the best informed projections that we can. I think one of the things to note is that in a couple of minutes, we're going to talk about fiscal '25 and our projections. If we look back to fiscal '25, if we look to '24 to '23, income tax has been a very strong revenue source for the city. We've experienced continued wage growth, which has resulted in increased income tax receipts for the city. And so this is just something where, you know, it would appear based off of the headwinds that we are entering that we're not going to have that same stability coming from that revenue source as we enter fiscal '26.
Agreed. Things are moving very fast on a federal level. Folks are very, they didn't understand that this stuff was going to happen in a very short amount of time and things are going to be, more stuff is going to be happening in a shorter amount of time and I just want to make sure that we're prepared. I just don't see how we stay on this increase. But you guys are the ones who make the projections. Council, Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to sort of build off of the chair's point and also if we could go back to FY '24 and '23, the projections were off initially by about, in '23, 62 million and in '24, 59.6 million. Is that, is that accurate, Director?
I don't have the '23 and '24 figures directly in front of me. We were, the, in fiscal, what I can say is in fiscal '23 and '24, we were, there was, there were large surpluses in our income tax revenue. It's important to keep in mind that those years also were capturing tax years where individuals were receiving large pay increases based off of what was happening in the broader economic, broader job market. So we know that during those periods, people were receiving large, overall wages were going up. And, you know, that is borne out in a number of data sets. And so, you know, we didn't always have the, that, to Chairwoman McCray's point, we didn't always have the, you know, information was changing in terms of what individual's income was looking like. And so our budget forecast in both of those years was more conservative than what ended up playing out.
Understood, but conservative to the tune of like a $60 million-ish delta, right? I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
And in which particular, is this related to income tax?
Yes. Overall revenue, I think, was off by 62, I am looking at the numbers, 62.8 million in '23, a surplus in '24, 59.6.
Yep. So in the four and a half billion dollars, in the four and a half billion dollar budget, $60 million being, $60 million surplus is not that significant. But what I would say, especially during those times, you're talking about the pandemic years. The pandemic years are outliers when you look at the totality. If we look at the past five to seven years, you can always pull out those pandemic years. Pandemic years, you have pandemic aid coming in in the form of CARES Act. So that means you have more revenue coming in. We have higher investment earned. We have higher investment earnings. You saw interest rates that were higher. So again, it all, it all should be factored into what the economic climate and environment is at that time. And when you look at '23 and '24, those are in, we were right in the middle of those pandemic years. Now we're on the other side of the pendulum and the pendulum is swinging in a different direction than what we saw when we were at the height of the pandemic and we received additional aid. We saw a labor market that was more in line with employees rather than employers. And so, as the Director mentioned, you were seeing higher wages. So I think we do have to account for the economic factors during that time. But what we can do is go back and pull the '23 and '24 figures and work with our team to let you know what we believe to be the drivers of the surpluses in those years.
And I, I mean, I just brought the slide back up to sort of see the, see the difference in terms of the overall revenue stream. I mean, I'll point out that this is a revenue that is, you know, just between 400 and 500 million dollars annually. And as, I think the other nuance to take into account here is, as I was mentioning to Councilman Gray, the way that this, we don't collect this tax, right? The state collects all the income tax. There's a formula that it gets dispersed. We can project what, based off of economic factors in the labor market here locally, what we think our 3.2% should be. But there are other factors that go into how the state allocates the funds. Part of it is they have this portion of the formula called the unallocated reconciliation. And that's where the state will look back and be like, and realize, and identify proceeds that should have been allocated back to local governments. And when you're talking about some of those surpluses in '23 and '24, they're part of the reconciliation. And what I would contend is that it would be very bad financial practice of the city of Baltimore to account for that one-time reconciliation money as recurring income tax revenue that's not borne out in any sort of economic factors that we can identify in the labor market.
Sure. No, I completely understand. I mean, I'd say this was sort of the out years of the pandemic in '23. I mean, I see pandemic as more '20 through '22, but certainly, you know, federal government is engaging and doing things with ARPA and all the rest. I think my overall point is fully understand that this year in particular is going to have real challenges, as the Chair mentioned, as Councilman Gray, around specifically income and the potential for some of our middle to higher-end jobs to be lost. And at the same time, to me, again, as I think about 24 million dollars of additional fines and fees, that feels extremely challenging, given that we have had these surpluses in past years and given that we likely will not. I just think it makes it extremely difficult. And again, we can go back and forth about targeted versus not targeted, but I would just say that things like the Vice President mentioned, EMS fees, you know, I do worry about those being shouldered by our most vulnerable residents, as she mentioned, older adults. So, again, just want to sort of reiterate that, for me, it is really tough in this fiscal climate where we've seen just a really tough session in Annapolis, where we're seeing it is not even clear where the bottom is in terms of the impact of the tariff policy. I don't think anyone knows where that is going, where we see the dismantling of large chunks of the federal government to put additional burdens on businesses or residents in Baltimore. But appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I would like to offer some additional thoughts here. So, I've been the city administrator for about two years now. When I walked in, I walked into my second week with a phone call from PG County about an increase to Kerwin. After we thought that we had met our Kerwin obligation at 60 million dollars, before I stepped into the role, we saw an increase of an additional 80 when we anticipated 10 or 15. So, in my, this will be my third budget. My first budget, 120 million. Last year, 100 million. This year, 85 million. And each year, we've done it without increasing taxes on our residents. Each year, we have limited the impact of fines and fees. We are facing unprecedented times in this country, unprecedented times in the state. And yes, we are facing unprecedented times here locally. And we are trying to be as responsible as possible, but we are shouldering what is very significant fiscal impact to the city of Baltimore. You're talking, since I've been in this role, 300, 400 million dollars that we've had to find without sacrificing or cutting services. And I'm proud that we've been able to sit before you and not cut services, not close rec centers, not cut back on our services and public works and not pass these things on to our residents. But without additional revenue, it is very difficult to balance a budget in these times. And so, we tried to do what was the most responsible thing that we thought that we could do. I am happy to have conversations between now and when we present the Mayor's recommended budget about other revenues. So if we take away a revenue, we have to replace that revenue. And so those are conversations that we're happy to have with members of the City Council, with you, Mr. Council President, and your staff about other revenue generation ideas in between budgets if we want to make some changes. But again, if you take away that revenue, you're going to also have to replace the revenue. I do want to put a plug in for the 10-year financial plan, which, again, you probably have heard me talk about for two years and it is ready this spring. And so with the 10-year financial plan, we are looking at how we're modernizing government. A part of modernizing government is modernizing our fine and fee structure so that we have the type of fine and fee structure that other municipal governments and jurisdictions across the country have as well, because we do not have a modern fine and fee structure. But what the 10-year plan does is it looks at the totality of the city's finances and it puts forward recommendations to reduce the property tax rate, to generate more revenue and to also make our agencies more efficient and effective so that we can also identify cost savings from our revenues as well. And so we actually hope to couple the recommended budget as well as the release of the 10-year plan so that the 10-year plan shows the trajectory and where we're going over the next five and 10 years while this, while the '26 budget will be the fiscal plan for, of course, the next year. So we're being thoughtful about the fiscal health and stability of the city of Baltimore. And the last thing that I'll caveat this with are, we haven't at all talked about or seen the potential impacts of grant funding and other federal aid. And so we are going to get to a point in the city of Baltimore where we're going to have to make very hard decisions and we want to do that with our most vulnerable residents in mind and we want to do it in partnership with the City Council.
No, fully understood and absolutely appreciate the incredibly challenging times that we are living through. I don't think anyone in this chamber has any doubt that, we have never been, at least since I've been around here, in a moment like this where it is not clear where the bottom is, the markets are completely out of control right now. And at the same time, I think what is important is that in many ways, we have been trending in the right direction in the city of Baltimore, in that we have seen significant reductions in violent crime and modest improvements in population growth. My concern is that we not offset the gains that we have made in this extremely precarious moment that we find ourselves in where you are absolutely right. We are going to have to shoulder a part of what the federal and state governments used to do in the city of Baltimore. My worry is that, that shouldering, that we do everything within our power to keep it off of residents and businesses, that we not lose the momentum that this city has right now, where, you know, the mayor, I, most Councilmen, we talk about being in a Renaissance moment or being in a comeback moment, but that we not lose that momentum by putting additional strain on our residents as they are already, I mean, you know, you go into the grocery store and you will hear folks concerned about their BG&E bills and about just the day-to-day struggle that folks are facing right now. So again, I look forward to that further conversation with Director Larson, with you, City Administrator Leach, and with my colleagues on the council.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Vice President, I know you had a question.
Just a quick switch to highway user revenue, which seems to be on a positive note. So that is reassuring us that the Key Bridge is definitely, you know, the new Key Bridge is definitely going to happen and there's no problems with that, which is good news. You know, a lot of residents do not know that Baltimore basically owns our own streets except for, you know, certain routes. And I think it's definitely a good note that, for me, it's looking like we will be working on continually improving our street structure, certain intersections that thousands and thousands of people cross, like Falls Road and Northern Parkway, and that have been problems for many, many, many years. So I'm hoping that attention is going to be put on a lot of those main fare fares. I know a lot of this would probably be conversation with DOT, but it sounds like budget-wise, that is really good for our city because I know there's other cities around the country that are having problems with their highway revenue funds.
So, in fiscal '26, we'll be receiving just under 272 million dollars through state highway user revenue. 94 million of that is going to go to DOT capital and nearly all of the year-over-year increase is going into the capital program. While this is good news for fiscal '26, I think one of the things that I would really caution is that in fiscal '27, we're slated to receive 12.2% of statewide, of the statewide allocation again, but then we drop back off in fiscal '28. So, we do have work to do in terms of ensuring that we're able to sustain this investment in our roads, depending upon where that state allocation goes post fiscal '27.
And Sarah, do you, can you pull the capital numbers? I think we actually put an additional 10 million or between 7 and 10 million into DOT road resurfacing in the capital budget. But Sarah, can you confirm, please?
Yes, just give me a moment to look up the exact numbers, yes.
How much, how much longer, how much time do you need?
I'm sorry, it's 1.25 million for each of the sectors, so I was just going to do the math, in addition to the HUR revenue. So that's in general funds in FY '26. So, I think it's 5 million additional for street resurfacing.
Thank you. That's, that's a good, that's another good number. So we're going to see really some good changes starting to happen on our street as far as the street structures and hopefully that there's communication through that process with the things that are, the street repiping and all of those things with DOT and the conduit stuff with BG&E. That communication is really important. I don't know if you want to comment on that, but...
Yeah, I would defer to the city administrator.
Thank you so much for that, Madam Vice President. It is always a work in progress, but we know it is absolutely a priority to coordinate, utility coordination. And we actually have a system that all of our utility partners use whenever they need to access the system and whenever they are doing work. That does not mean that there are not very real challenges with communication and with work actually getting done, but under the leadership of the new Director, we've already seen a lot of progress in better coordinating with our utility partners so that, one, we're ensuring that they are repaving our streets properly after the work is finished and, two, that we're coordinating when they are doing work and when we're doing repairs. So absolutely a work in progress and I'll make sure that DOT is prepared to talk more about that during their budget hearing.
Thank you. That's very important, especially when you had mentioned that we really have to pay attention to what's going to happen in 2028.
Yes.
And not, you know, wasting funds for going, repaving over things that someone else was responsible for.
Definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. We're going to be moving into our quarterly briefings. We have additional presentations.
So now we will switch gears and talk about the current fiscal year, fiscal '25, our second quarter projections. So this captures actuals from July 1st through December 31st of 2024. So in total, we are projecting an 8.3 million dollar deficit. That is driven by a 22.6 million dollar surplus on the revenue side and a 30.9 million dollar deficit on the expenditure side. So in terms of revenue, we're projecting about just under, just a 0.9% variance and on the expenditure side, about a 1.3% variance compared to budget. This projection does not account for any sort of major third quarter expenditures that, where we didn't have actuals. So a couple of notable examples, the police contract went into place in January and the bulk of our snow removal costs were incurred in the third quarter. And so we'll see those costs when we come back to talk to you about the third quarter. We also, the revenue piece is based off of actuals through December 31st and so, you know, any sort of economic disruptions that we're experiencing from inflation or unemployment, those would be picked up as we are working on our third quarter projections. And that work is happening right now for the budget team. So first, we'll start by talking about revenue. So as I mentioned, a 22.6 million dollar projected surplus. This is coming primarily from income tax and transfer and recordation taxes. We are seeing deficits related to parking revenue and then investment earnings. So this table here just shows you those variations by the different categories for how we group revenue. And this table is breaking down the surplus just as it would pertain to our local taxes. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk through each of these items, but first talking about the revenue streams with major surpluses and then with the items, with the revenue streams with major deficits. So first up for income tax, we're projecting a 19.6 million dollar surplus for next year. This is based off of allocations that we had received through the first half of the year. What we were seeing is that we had assumed about a 4.6% increase in local wages. What we were actually seeing in year-to-date in fiscal '25 was about a 6% increase and that's what is contributing to the higher state allocation. As I, as I mentioned, you know, how any sort of changes in employment rate or whatnot will flow through, we will start to, we would not, we would not see that in this data. As I mentioned, even... I mentioned, even as we look to third quarter, you know, for individuals who are in an unemployment status or in an administrative leave status, they're not on unemployment. And so in terms of how we see those federal impacts flow through, it's going to be delayed for a little bit before we see, before we see that in our income tax numbers. Next up for transfer and recordation, we're projecting about an $8.2 million surplus, consistent with the trends I was just sharing, is that the overall transactions that we have are down, but the value of those transactions are up year-over-year. Next up, in terms of projected deficits, so first would be property taxes. I do just want to note, we have a small deficit here, but in, we're projecting a deficit of about $784,000. When you stack that up against a $1.1 billion revenue stream, I would, I would actually contend this is largely trending at budget. The slight difference there is related to how the actual appeals ended up playing out in fiscal '26 versus what we had assumed for the appeals rate. Our collection rate remains at about 97.5% year-over-year, which is good news. Next up, investment earnings. Here, we're projecting about a $6.3 million deficit. This is partially related to, you just heard me talk about the drop in terms of the cash on hand that the city had. Where part of the reason why we have a lower cash on hand in fiscal '25 is related to the city's Capital Projects Fund. We haven't been able to issue a borrowing for a couple of years, and so we are essentially fronting cash for the Capital Projects Fund. Once we do that borrowing later this spring, we will see, we will see that come back up. But again, what is actually going to end up happening here will be highly driven by what is happening in the markets, which, as we're all observing right now, is highly volatile. Next up for highway user revenue, we're projecting a $3.7 million deficit. Our fiscal '25 budget was in line with the state assumptions for HUR, and again, it was based off of that allocation that we were slated to receive in fiscal '25. What you just heard me talk about in relation to fiscal '26 was that fuel tax collections are down, so through the first half of fiscal '25, those are down by about 10.7%, and vehicle registration is down by about 12%. What is helping that is the corporate income tax portion of the allocation that's actually up year-over-year. Next is parking-related revenues. As I previously mentioned, we had assumed about $6.2 million of new revenue in the fiscal '25 budget. What we are seeing is that some of the revenue associated with some of those initiatives has been delayed, specifically the license plate reader technology has taken longer to implement. We also saw less revenue than what we had originally forecasted from turning the late fees back on for parking penalties. Do just want to note that DOT continues to focus on filling traffic enforcement officers. There were a number of vacant positions that were filled in the second, in the second and third quarter, and so we're continuing to closely monitor the impact of that hiring on this revenue stream. Next up is traffic camera violations. So this is down by about $2.8 million compared to budget. A portion of that, the biggest driver of that deficit is we had some delays in terms of deploying new cameras that were going online in fiscal '25. The other item, you just heard me talk about, how the number of citations come down the longer cameras have been deployed. So we're able to fairly easily redeploy our speed cameras, but we are not as easily able to redeploy red light cameras because of the hardware associated with installing that equipment on our traffic signals. And so specifically, we are starting to see a decline in terms of the number of red light citations that are issued, just because those, just because they've been in the specific locations for a number of years. Now let's switch and talk about what we're seeing on the expenditure side. So expenditures are projected to be over budget by about just under $31 million. This deficit is coming on the, on the staff cost side. We're seeing that our overall vacancies are down compared to fiscal '24, but that overtime costs are up. In terms of non-personnel spending, we're projecting about a $12.7 million deficit. Some of this is coming from fleet costs, and that's associated with some of the maintenance and repair costs for various assets in the city's fleet. But we're also seeing that some contractual spending is trending over in various agencies as well. As I previously mentioned, there's a number of major expenditures that took place in the third quarter that will impact these numbers as we go to update our projections. And as I mentioned, that work is happening right now. Again, that's mainly in snow and then police staff costs. I wanted to take a second and just put some of these trends into context, because we've been talking about vacancies and overtime for a number of years in this setting. And so I just wanted to compare where we are for fiscal '25 compared to where we were a year ago. So if we look at civilian overtime for the first half of the fiscal year, in fiscal '24, we had spent $18.7 million. In fiscal '25, for the first half of the year, we had spent 17.8. So we were, overtime spending for civilian functions was actually down by 5% year-over-year. We were projecting that the final overtime spending in fiscal '25 would be higher than last year, but that was mainly related to how we were forecasting some seasonal overtime costs. And so that number will change as we update our third-quarter projection. Sworn overtime, so this would be police and fire, that was actually up in, for the first half of the year. So in fiscal '24, we had spent about $50 million. In fiscal '25, we had spent $54.4 million, or an increase of about 9%. And we're projecting that our final spending for sworn overtime will be up year-over-year. Citywide vacancies, if we looked at the first half of fiscal '24, we ended the first half of the year at 1,900 vacancies. On the, in contrast, in fiscal '25, we had about 1,600 vacancies, so a drop of about 19% year-over-year. And then finally, for our non-personnel spending, in fiscal '24, we had spent about $220 million. In fiscal '25, we had spent about $255 million. So those expenditures were up year-over-year. So now what I'll do is I'll walk through each of the agencies. We'll first talk about agencies with surpluses, then we'll talk with agencies that are projected to be at budget, and then wrap up by talking about deficit agencies. So first up, the city council was projected to have a $1.7 million surplus. This was primarily driven by vacancies and turnover that had happened within the agency. The comptroller, it was projecting a $2.1 million surplus. That is consistent with their surplus from the first quarter. They are seeing savings specifically on their audits team and in accounts payable. That is coming mostly from vacant positions. Legislative reference has a surplus of about $200,000. That is coming from savings from renegotiating the lease for the archives space. Municipal zoning and appeals has about a $100,000 surplus. This is coming from one vacant position in that small office. And then finally, the state's attorney, their office had about a $5.8 million surplus. That's higher than what we were projecting at the first quarter. That savings is coming from software and then a number of highly compensated vacant positions. Agencies that are projected at budget, so this is a surplus of less than 10%. Circuit Court, they're, they are projected to have a $1.5 million surplus. That is coming from staff vacancies and then savings in some of their juror compensation costs. Board of Elections has a very, had a very small projected deficit essentially at budget. One thing to note is we had some of their expenditures associated with the November election that we could see at second quarter, but any sort of delayed payments associated with the November election would be picked up in our third-quarter projection. General Services has a surplus of about $700,000. That's coming from vacancies and then savings in their costs for, their holding costs associated with surplus schools. The Health Department has a $4.5 million surplus. This is coming from a high vacancy rate within that agency. Housing and Community Development has a $700,000 surplus, again, coming from savings on vacant positions. However, their vacancy rate is down 33% compared to the start of the fiscal year, as we see staffing ramp up in that, in that agency. Human Resources has a surplus of about $800,000, coming from vacancies within their civil service management team. The Law Department was essentially at budget. The Library had, is projected to have a surplus of about $2 million. Again, this is one that, the projection will be updated in the third quarter just to reflect the current status of the negotiations with their newly-formed union. And then the Inspector General's Office had a surplus of about $200,000, coming from savings in terms of the timeline for implementing their new ethics software. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success has a $200,000 surplus, coming from savings in terms of software costs. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement is largely projected to be in line with budget. And the Mayor's Office of Employment Development had a, has a surplus of just under $100,000. This, this savings is coming from how they allocate overhead or administrative costs associated with the grants that they receive. This also takes into account the final cost for the youth works program from last summer. And then Orphans Court has a surplus of about $100,000. Office of Equity and Civil Rights has a $400,000 surplus, again, coming from staff vacancies. The Planning Department is essentially at budget. Spending is up compared to the first quarter. The department is utilizing some vacancy savings from open positions to help offset some professional services and higher material costs. The Department of Public Works has about a $6.6 million surplus. This is coming from savings related to the use of a contracted hauler to support trash and recycling. There was a delay in terms of bringing on that contract. And then finally, the Department of Transportation had about a $3 million surplus. This is coming primarily from savings on a variety of the different contracts that are administered by the agency. Now, agencies with a projected deficit. The Department of Finance is projecting a deficit of just over $200,000. That's coming from the department's use of unbudgeted contracts to support various functions within the department. The Fire Department has a projected deficit of just under $36 million. That's coming from sworn overtime, the use of contractual EMS services, and then fleet costs. The Liquor License Board has a deficit of about $600,000. That is coming from staff costs and overtime costs. The BSE, or the Office of Information Technology, has a $2.7 million deficit. This is coming largely from costs associated with various software systems that are managed by BSE. And then finally, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services has a deficit of about $2.4 million. This is largely coming from costs associated with shelter operations and partial late payment for some costs that were associated with fiscal '24. The Environmental Control Board has a $100,000 deficit. This is driven by converting a contractual position to full-time. The Arts and Culture Grant category has about a $100,000 deficit. That's coming from some emergency repairs that had to take place at the Bromo Tower. The Police Department has a deficit of about $25.2 million. This is coming largely from overtime costs as the number of vacancies within the department continues to increase. Wreckin' Parks has a deficit of about $7.6 million. Most of this deficit is coming from costs associated with park maintenance, as well as urban forestry. And then finally, the Sheriff's Office is projecting a $1.7 million deficit, primarily coming from overtime costs, as well as some unbudgeted vehicle costs within the agency. I did just want to note that two weeks ago, the city administrator announced a spending freeze for agencies that were projected to have a deficit based off of our second-quarter review. So agencies that are impacted by the spending freeze are seeing a pause on personnel actions that are related to reclassification actions on their positions. There is also increased review and approval of discretionary overtime. There is a, an additional level of review going into procurement-related actions. This would include additional review and scrutiny of contracts that are going to the Board of Estimates, and then freezing all P-card-related expenditures and actions, except for those of the agency directors or their direct report. As I have mentioned a couple of times, we're currently in the process of updating our third-quarter projections. The third quarter ended last Monday, and we will be prepared to come back before you all with our third-quarter projections around the same time that we transmit the fiscal '26 budget to the city council in May. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Knowing that we have this tariff situation, this might be not going to go away anytime soon, related to these fleet costs, how are you projecting for these items, just specifically for fleet costs?
Yeah, so we're working closely with our partners in the Department of General Services. What, what it appears is, that is happening, is that these higher fleet costs are coming from additional maintenance costs above and beyond what we assume in the budget. And so in the budget, we're accounting for the preventative maintenance costs associated with doing the routine repairs to equipment, as well as factoring in some, some level of non-preventative, non-routine repairs based off of what we've seen in terms of actual spending trends. Most of the deficit that we're seeing this year for fleet stuff is coming from upfitting new assets or upfitting specific assets. And so we're trying to figure out if that is related to, you know, things that had been on order for a long time, where there were delays from getting assets in the door. And so we're just seeing an increased volume, and it's a temporary thing, versus trying to identify where there's like systemic maintenance issues that are happening with specific assets within our fleet, so that we can identify and target a new strategy for controlling some of those maintenance costs with the cities, with city equipment.
If you went into the, into the upfit, and was the upfiting for the service department scheduled? Like how, what happened with that agency?
So one of the areas that I mentioned where we're having those upfitting issues is it within the Fire Department fleet charges. So if we go back to fiscal '24, there was funding for additional fire assets to be purchased. And so we, but there's a long delay between when we purchase an asset and when we take ownership of it for our fire fleet in particular. And so there was a, you know, we finally received those assets a couple of years later and then had to upfit them, which was, given the delay in terms of when we received the asset, it was an unanticipated expenditure this year.
And very similarly, that also happens with DPW Fleet. So I want to address the fleet maintenance issue, but then also the issue around tariffs.
And then can we get to the Sheriff's Office? Because that was actually my original question about the upfitting of those vehicles.
By all means.
In terms of the specific assets that were part of that, I don't have that information directly in front of me, but I would be, I would be more than happy to coordinate with my partners in fleet and get those specific, get specifics of that back for you.
Okay, so I would, I want to make that a...
Yep. Yep.
I want to make that a committee request. How 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 long do you think that would be like a week that you that you would be able to pull that information together?
We can provide our follow-ups from this hearing by next Tuesday.
Okay.
Would that be?
I want all the information about the upfitting of the vehicles for the for the Sheriff's Office.
And so
And just for the Fine Department, I want to say, hey, I understand what was happening with their vehicles.
I know what I have is upfitting. So they have a budget of $269,000 for vehicle maintenance costs. Through the first half of the fiscal year, the actual expenditure was $1.1 million. And so that's what's driving the deficit there. But again, I can get the specifics of what work was being done on their assets and provide a more more specific breakdown for you.
I appreciate you. See, I know that you had something that that you were trying to say.
Oh, no, I just wanted to offer one around the upfitting of DPW vehicles as well. So you're talking about fire apparatuses, which, as the director mentioned, two years ago, we made a large purchase. We similarly, we also made a large purchase of of some DPW fleet as well. So I think we purchased 80 low packers at this point, probably close to two years ago. And we've been receiving them in batches of 20, 30 vehicles. And so we're, again, that's why you're seeing the large upfitting costs, is because they're arriving two years later after we ordered them. But that also connects to your question around the impact of tariffs on the city's purchasing power for our fleet. So we actually are in a pretty solid position right now with most of our fleet assets. So for DPW in particular, we went out, we purchased 80 new low packers. We're going to have the most modernized fleet in at least the past 20 years for DPW. We also went out and ordered, I want to say, 16 new street sweepers. So we've already made some pretty large purchases because we had one-time resources that were available. So we were able to go out and update Fire and DPW's fleet. They are still, there may still be some fleet needs around. And we've also upgraded some of our BPD vehicles as well and our helicopters. There still may be minor needs in Wreckin' Parks, as well as in DOT. But the city is actually in a pretty good place when it comes to our fleet. I could not say that two to three years ago. We were not in a good position. So hopefully, we are not going to be subject to needing to purchase a purchase a large volume of vehicles, especially now that these tariffs are in place.
Thank you. Now, changing citywide vacancies, was is that is that 19% change, like, due to hiring? Is it was it also positions that may have been eliminated?
So it's related to hiring. And where we what we've actually seen is that we've made tremendous improvement in terms of hiring specifically for our civilian positions. And where we still see high vacancy levels or vacancy trends going in the wrong direction are specifically in the Police Department. We still have in Fire, we are almost to full staffing for firefighter positions, but we have a high number of vacancies for paramedics.
Vice President, does you have any questions here?
I guess just one, and maybe for the general public. The statement, 1.4 million deficit in urban forestry driven by Camp Small damages. Can you kind of just elaborate on that a little more? It's that's kind of in my backyard.
Definitely. And so, you know, as a result of the fire that happened at Camp Small this this fall, we, you know, obviously incurred a number of costs associated with responding to that fire, but then also working on reinvesting back in that location and back in that operation. So some of the costs that we're seeing in fiscal '25 are sort of some of the immediate costs in terms of how we continue to invest in urban forestry and the future of Camp Small. You know, that will take place over multiple fiscal years as we look to specifically make some capital investments at that location.
Thank you. There's like four or five surrounding communities that pay attention to what's going on at that Camp Small. And if you could just keep, please keep us abreast. How is that going to affect just overall forestry? Because they've been trying to get ahead on, you know, tree damage, just overall around the city.
So I'll defer on the operational item to to the city administrator. I think from a from a budget perspective, you know, the the leadership at Wreckin' Parks, as well as the urban forestry team, had been, you know, have really been focused in fiscal '25 in terms of how they fill vacancies on their team and then how they, you know, are strategic in terms of deploying additional contractual services, really focused on how they get their backlog as low as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, madam.
Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know who this question goes to, but what are we doing as a city? And I see that we have our our freeze actions. But what are we doing? What were we doing before and what are we going to do after to make sure that we aren't continuing to have wasteful spending? And I say that because obviously, the IG report of $2.2 million of overtime, mispayments entered incorrectly by the Sheriff's Department, and then we also hear about the unbudgeted vehicle upgrades. How is that able to happen? And then what are we going to do henceforth to make sure that that doesn't happen again? Because although it's only three, I guess, $3 million altogether, that has ripple effects throughout the entire budget. And overall, just people just look at it from a hit line perspective and just say, like, who's at the wheel? So if you could explain that, please.
Sure, I'm happy to take that one, council member. Thank you so much for raising this question, and it's an important one and one that we grapple with every day. As it relates to the Sheriff's Office, with that particular issue, there was a directive that was issued to those employees. Our Finance Department actually did catch catch the fact that the Sheriff's Office was over budget in that in that particular line item. And I want to say they caught it within the first 90 days of that of that directive being issued. We saw the spike in overtime costs and were able to have a conversation with the Sheriff's Office. And then ultimately, we were able to put a halt on that action within Workday. And so our finance teams are regularly monitoring agency budgets. I am court emceeing kind of the quarterly updates. But our finance team is actively monitoring the impact of personnel actions. For example, personnel actions, when they go through our ECC, actually have to come to me, and I have to approve those reclassifications. For example, our payroll team is monitoring the payroll actions. And then on the the vehicle piece, I think the some of these vehicle purchases or and/or the upfitting of these vehicles and these vehicle costs, I think they came within the first two quarters of this fiscal year. And so we are now able to see that those actions are taking place, and now we're able to put a halt on some of those actions. But again, as the director mentioned, we put a freeze in place on personnel actions. We put a freeze in place on certain purchases. We also suspended P-cards for everyone outside of the executive team of an agency, so that you don't have staff at different levels making purchases that the director is not able to see. So we put a number of actions in place to ensure that we're able to get our spending in line. And we are definitely being more diligent about some of the about some of the spending that is that is happening outside of the budget, like we saw with the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. Also, could you go into, if you're able to, just the repercussions of of that overspending? Like, has that affected other agencies? Have that has that affected personnel decisions across the board? Just a general question.
Yes. Is this about the Sheriff's Office in particular or just broadly?
Well, that 2.2 million, which is overall the the overtime in general sometimes.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's a really good question. And so because all of our agencies are funded with some portion of the general fund, the actions of one agency impacts all of our city agencies and impacts the entirety and the totality of the city budget. They all contribute to the $8 million deficit that we're seeing now. Thankfully, we've seen pretty strong revenues, and so that's why we're not seeing a $30 million deficit sitting before you for this quarter. You're actually seeing an $8 million deficit. But that does not mean that those agencies do not need to be more diligent in managing and monitoring their spending. So when you see overspending on overtime, whether it's in the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, or even in Wreckin' Parks, it all interplays in some of the decisions that we have to make as a city to be able to cover that deficit. And so that is why we sent that broad-based guidance out to all of those agencies who are currently facing a deficit, and we are meeting with each of those agencies about
Thank you. We want to move on to the the next presentation. I believe that's from the planning.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Sarah Parnillam. I'm the Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis within the Planning Department. Thank you for inviting me to present on the Capital Improvement Program. When I came before this body in February, I provided an update on Quarter Two expenditures. And so today's presentation focuses on the FY '24 and FY '25 Capital Improvement Program. I did provide a report for the council that does have all of the capital projects and all of the expenditures through Quarter Two. And as you'll see, we do have agency representatives here if you have any questions for them. So I'm going to give a little bit of an introduction and then talk about the sources of funds for FY '24 and FY '25, the uses of funds for those fiscal years, and then we'll have some highlights for each of our larger city agencies. So these are the agencies that participate in the Capital Improvement Program. You'll see representatives in the room today from most of these agencies, Department of Public Works, Transportation, Schools, B sit, HCD, BDC, Wreckin' Parks. And then General Services represents a lot of our other agencies that don't participate directly in the Capital Improvement Program, but are in buildings that are overseen by that agency, including the one that we're all sitting in today. So just in terms of a little bit of background about capital project delivery, there is a lengthy timeline for delivering capital projects. They go through a planning phase, a phase for bid and award design for for design, and then we have that same process of bidding and awarding construction before the construction itself takes place, and then entering a warranty and maintenance phase. And I think the council is familiar with some of the challenges that we're facing, both nationwide and locally. We've talked a lot this morning about what's happening kind of at the federal level and nationally with, you know, the tariffs that have been implemented. But we've seen even before that lots of pressures on on capital projects in terms of inflation, in terms of supply chain, in terms of labor shortages. And the inflation and supply chain issues are going to become, you know, exacerbated with the current economic situation. We have a variety of impacts on capital budget spending. So in the past, we have budgeted for projects over multiple years because we had limited funds and were not able to fully fund projects all at once. This extended the timeline for projects and delayed our ability to bid those projects. Going forward, starting with FY '26, we're trying to fully fund construction in a single fiscal year. So we're taking steps to to move away from from that challenge that we've had in the past. The city has a lengthy procurement process for both design and construction, which extends the timeline and can make some of the estimates that we're using in order to budget inaccurate. We also have a limited number of companies that are willing to bid on city projects. So we have reduced competition that tends to drive up cost. We have regulatory reviews that can cause delays. So we have stormwater review, building permit review, state and federal reviews, particularly for transportation projects. And then we have a series of local mandates that can impact the cost of capital projects. I've lost my All right. So now I'm going to shift to talking about the source of funds for FY '24 and '25. So here's an overview of the different types of revenue that are included in the capital budget. And it may be a little bit easier to understand if we look at it visually. So here you can see that the majority of the funds in the capital budget that are in green here are our utility funds. So those are the revenue bonds, the county grants, and the utility funds that are particular to DPW for the water, wastewater, and stormwater utilities. Down at the bottom here, you can see in purple, our local discretionary funds. You can see that they're a relatively small percentage of the capital budget. Those are our general funds and our general obligation bonds. In yellow, you can see the highway user revenue. We were talking a little bit about that earlier in today's hearings. You can see in FY '24, the highway user revenue was relatively modest. And then in FY '25, we have that increase that Director Larson talked about, but that is a temporary increase in the highway user revenue. So here you can just see the trends for general obligation bonds over time. For FY '24 and '25, we were still at the level of having $80 million a year in general obligation bonds. For FY '26, we're increasing that. But for the years that we're looking at right now, it was $80 million a year in general obligation bonds. And then if you look at the trends for highway user revenue, you will see that for FY '25, we're at a significant increase, that's $69 million in the capital budget, a significant increase from FY '24, which was only $25 million. The highway user revenues are projected to increase further for FY '26 and '27. But as was mentioned earlier, it's a temporary increase, and so those levels are projected to go back down without further action in Annapolis. So now we want to look at the use of funds for fiscal years '24 and '25. So here you can see a breakdown of the recommendations in the Capital Improvement Program by agency. And again, I think it's easier if we look at this visually. So here you can see that the utilities are the majority of the city's capital improvement program. Again, those are funded through those dedicated revenues that I mentioned before. So the utility funds, the the revenue bonds, and the the county contributions that are specific for the utilities cannot be used for other agencies. You'll see that the next largest share of the capital budget is the Department of Transportation. Here again, the agency has access to funds beyond local funds, so a lot of transportation projects have an 80% match of federal funds, and so that is contributing to to the size of transportation's budget. The next largest agency is Department of Housing and Community Development. Again, that agency has access to federal and state funds that some of our other agencies do not. And so you can see that the the percentages are a little bit different in FY '25, but the overall relative size of the agencies overall relative size of the agencies remains. So with that increase in highway user revenue in FY25, we can see that transportation is a larger share of the city's capital budget, and DPW is still the most sizable, but not quite quite as large. So I wanted to just provide some some quick highlights for each of the agencies. So starting with the Department of Transportation, we were talking earlier about street resurfacing. In FY24, we had just under $9 million. In FY25, because of the increase for highway user revenue, we're able to make a much more substantial investment in street resurfacing, $36 million. For bridges, you can see, you know, 10 million and 14 million respectively. And you can see some of the other larger projects for the Department of Transportation. These highlights are some of the projects that received the largest allocations for each of these agencies. For the Department of Housing and Community Development, one of the largest projects is impact investment areas. We have increasing local investment as well as state investment in our impact investment areas. We have funding for demolition and stabilization for the homeownership incentive program, as well as affordable housing. For schools, these are funds that complement the 21st Century Schools Initiative. The school system gets a large portion of their funds directly from the state, and they're not reflected in the city's budget. But these are local funds that are that are used to match those state funds. A large portion of them are used for systemic improvements. So that's for windows and doors and fire alarms and roofs and HVAC systems and that type of thing. And then there are specific schools that have renovations, replacements, expansions that are funded through the capital budget that you see listed here. For General Services, we have several different projects here. I'll call out City Hall Exterior Stone Walls. I think everyone, as we walk in through the scaffolding, can see that, you know, that work in action. You can see some of the other items here. We have Police Headquarters Garage, the Southern Police District, the Northern Community Action Center, and the Park Heights Library. For Information Technology, we have a series of projects listed here, tax application modernization being the largest one at $10.5 million. And then you can see some of the other items that they have related to applications, related to public safety, related to infrastructure for IT. For Recreation and Parks, we have improvements to to parks. We have the North Harford Park. We have Bochek Park Athletic Center, Reedburg Park Improvements, Solo Gibbs Park Phase And then for DPW for solid waste, every year we are contributing to the expansion of the Quarantine Road landfill through the capital budget. There are also funds dedicated for this expansion in the operating budget. We received a grant for compost facilities that's reflected in the FY24 budget. And then there are compliance items every year for solid waste that are funded in the capital budget. For for the water utility, the largest item that we have is lead service line inventory and replacement at just over $100 million in FY24. Also, the Cromwell rehabilitation at just over 40 million in FY25. For wastewater, Patapsco is the largest project, the headworks upgrade at just over 70 million in FY24, and the clarifier rehabilitation at just over 50 million in FY25. And then stormwater, the citywide stream restoration is the largest project in these two fiscal years at 22 million in FY25. And then you can see that there's a number of other projects. An exciting one is the Middle Branch Resiliency Initiative, just over 10 million in FY25. And that's the conclusion of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have for me. And we also have representatives from the agencies if you have questions about the specific projects that are highlighted.
Traffic safety improvements citywide. Can you talk about the decrease from FY24 to
I can ask Transportation to speak to it specifically, but generally, as we're looking at the capital budget, it's very different than the operating budget where you would be looking at things to be consistent from one year to the next or have a slight increase. These are projects that, you know, need particular amounts of funding in a particular year, and that may vary and be much more lumpy in the capital budget than you would see in the operating budget. So there may have been the timing of kind of the the work that they're doing for traffic safety improvements that led to that, changes in other projects that needed funding and that type of thing. But Director, I don't know if you had anything further you wanted to add.
Can you say the question again? I'm sorry. Like, I heard you, but it was kind of muffled. You asked about specifically safety improvements?
Traffic safety improvements, the decline?
Sure. It's 4.3 million in FY24 and 3 million in FY25.
And the line item, like, asking about the dollar amount specifically?
I just wanted to know why it declined. I think that...
Oh, the head.
Yeah. And just as a reminder, can everyone just state their name and just the agency that they're with?
You can come up here.
When speaking.
Good morning. Clea Baumhofer, Chief of Traffic Engineering with DOT. So in the prior year, this also included a grant allocation. So it was 3 million in local and then had a a safety grant for that 1 million difference. And so that 3 billion local is the same level of funding.
So it was just due to you guys, a decrease in in a grant that's usually given for traffic safety? Is that what you're saying, Clea?
I know. So well, so we pursued a federal grant. And that was for the that difference in funding.
So it was a federal discretionary grant that you see the difference from? Oh, sorry. My name is Veronica Macbeth. I'm the Director of DOT. So the difference you see from 4.3 million in federal funding to 3 million for fiscal 25, that's the difference between $3 million in federal funding due to a discretionary grant that was received for traffic safety? Specifically, which grant, do you know?
Yeah. So this is our, it's a H-SIT, so Highway Safety Improvement Program grant.
Thanks to you both. I know that was one of the boring items, and it was a quick explanation. I just wanted to know. When we talk about the impacts, the section, this will be page 40 of the presentation, the impacts on capital budget spending. And we see a ton of these items from, you know, a limited number of companies who are willing to bid on city projects, regulatory reviews, the lengthy procurement process for design and construction, those items. Knowing that those are the impacts, what what is being done to to mitigate these items, to lessen these issues?
Yeah. So a couple of years ago, the city created the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, and they are focused on delivery of capital projects and have been identifying some of these obstacles and working through potential solutions. And they're represented here today, too. If they were represented here, they may have had to leave if they want to add more detail. But they are they are actively working on addressing some of these challenges.
Okay. The representative could come up and and add more detail.
We had more representation and and they, I think, had to leave.
Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Anne Brookover, and I work at MOID in the grants part of it, so help with the grants part of it. But we also work on capital, monitoring capital projects every month, going over various projects specifically in sort of, we call them mayoral priority projects, and sort of go over how much how much is spent, how much is gained, also work on capital, excuse me, on sort of a capital improvement project process as well. So we've been working on that for the past couple of years. I'm so sorry. So in addition to grants, which is what I deal with, we also review capital projects on a monthly basis, specifically about 70 projects that are considered the mayoral priority projects. And then we also are working to improve the capital contracting process as well. And my colleagues who were here could give you a lot more detail about that.
Are you able to expound on, like, any of the solutions that you guys are coming up with within MOID or that you have come up with?
Sure. We have been working on improving the Green Book, the whole way that the city works in the contracting process. We also are doing sort of a whole capital process, capital project processing map, sort of really go through how every single agency conducts its capital, excuse me, how it conducts its capital contracting processes around the city. And then with the MPP, we ask questions of every capital agency, you know, what on specific projects, what if there's a gap, we ask why why there's a gap and work on solutions with agencies to help those get smaller. And of course, the part that I deal with is we help to get money, as you know. Things are definitely have changed a bit in the past couple of months, but we work on that as well.
When you say that you work with the agencies to identify gaps, has there been a consistent issue regarding gaps or that you would like to elaborate on?
I would say that there that is certainly something that we've been asking about. I think we are trying to figure that out and consistently asking what it is and working and trying to figure out why. I think it's not a a particular thing in any one agency. Sometimes it's a question of schedule. Sometimes it's a question of money, just to make sure that, you know, those gaps get smaller. I'd say about, I think, 60% of the projects, I think, are on time and and on budget, and some are not. And we're trying to work on narrowing that gap.
Thank you.
Sure.
I like your sweater, too.
Thank you.
VP Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I know, these are highlights, and I guess I want to kind of direct the Department of Transportation along with, I guess, just a general conversation on agency partnerships with a lot of these initiatives. And I just want to kind of give an example of a of an area. So we know that, an area that I'm familiar with. So we know that the Northwest Transfer Station, where people line up and do a lot of dumping, I mean, you know, for to take the dumping legally. And it's on Rice's Town Road, and it's also, you know, near Wabash. They line up. There's accidents on Rice's Town Road consistently in that area. And a lot of it is because there is, you know, the street lining, the, you know, just, it's all a safety problem. And of course, it's a residential area across the street, along with, you know, the popular Langston Hughes Community Business and Resource Center. This is just kind of an example of, it's just very dangerous. It's trashy looking. It's it's been like that for a very long time, not in not to take away trying to help solve the some of the, you know, dumping problems. But it's all about partnerships. And I just, you know, you have this general highlight, traffic safety improvement citywide, and looking at, you know, 4 million to 3 million, it's really not enough. I mean, we do. And I'm speaking kind of in the eyes of constituents. They see the streets around schools that don't have, you know, there's no lineage. And we spend a lot of time just calling for little individual things, like, are you gonna put the crosswalk, it's time to put the crosswalks across for schools. It's time to put the lines and things and where places like Northwest Transfer Station is. What? Listening to the forecast and prediction that we had early on, I want to know what do you have, what's going to be in place so we don't have to keep calling unnecessarily for individual stuff like this within our offices. And it's based on, a lot of it is based on safety. Would you like to respond? And any other agency can respond as well.
I can start. And thank you for your question again. My name is Veronica Macbeth. I am the Director of Baltimore City DOT. I think you make an excellent point. And, you know, I feel like we always talk about being asked to do more with less, but it doesn't negate the fact that safety is obviously the most paramount thing that we need to focus on as we are moving about the city and, you know, making sure that we have crosswalks in place for our citizens and constituents that are crossing the street, that we have appropriate street lighting, for people that are walking down the streets and utilizing these areas, whether they're going to community centers or just walking home or getting on a bus. And that we also have safe access to places like the Northwest Transfer Station. And I think it's about, like you said, it's partnership, us talking to DPW and also us actively working with our street lighting division, and also me talking with Clea, who's sitting over here, and making sure that we have a better operation as far as, like, looking at, like, the maintenance of traffic and how traffic is moving right there, right? We are at a really critical space where Wabash is right there on one street, and you're crossing over railroad tracks. And the traffic does, in fact, back up right there, adjacent to Rice's Town Road, where they're parallel to one another, and you have the subway going above it. So I've been stuck there, going to take my daughter to Western. So I know it all too well. It's not the most convenient space to be stuck in. It's also, it can become unsafe because sometimes people will sit and wait on the tracks. So it's an opportunity for us to do better. Also, making sure that we take a look at seeing how we can refresh crosswalks. These are some of the things that we are actively working on. It's one of the initiatives that we have started talking about within DOT, making sure that we are trying to upgrade crosswalks and also making sure that our curb ramps are ADA compliant. So we're actively going to be reaching out to council offices to talk to them about sidewalk improvements, curb ramp improvements, and also crosswalks. So definitely something that we would ask for you to keep on your shortlist, and something that we would work to talk to you about, and something that we would also look to talk to our DPW partners about, to see how we can do a better job in keeping our lines of communication open as far as the traffic moving in and out of that transfer station.
And just to add, because I'm, you know, I think just the conversation needs to happen. You know, some of these places are near, we're Wreckin Park, you know, our Wreckin Parks...
Absolutely.
The school, the vacant schools, you know, General Services. Is there, is there someone in these agencies that talk to each other, or can, say in front of a rec center, can, is there someone that's looking at this in Wreckin Parks that can call up DOT and say, "Look, it's time for you to put this, these..." that can call up DOT and say, look, it's time for you to put this, these lines? And I mean, it's, it looks like the conversations are not even happening. So I'm just kind of bringing it to awareness because we, we see it and we, as council members, are the ones that seem to be doing that part, which that's not what we should be doing.
Right. I would definitely, I would say that it should be a little bit of a joint effort across the board, right?
And I'm not putting this all on you.
No, 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 and I get it. I mean, you know, I'm happy to eat some crow here. And then, you know, I'll share the wealth with my BCRP colleagues and anybody else who wants some smoke from our friends at the front of the room. But no, it's not implicitly your job to tell us that. But, you know, we appreciate it. We want to hear from constituents. We want three-on-one reports. We do want to hear from our, you know, council leaders. But it is absolutely our jobs to be out in the streets and, you know, inspecting our streets to see where there are shortcomings. We have community liaisons that should be out in the communities, tapping into different networks out there as well, as far as community associations or things like that. But we should also be working with our counterparts at different agencies. So, you know, we need to do better with that. And so I think we are going to do a better job with actively engaging with one another to make sure that we have the right conversations.
Yeah, I wanted to just make the awareness that, you know, it's a void here. And that includes, you know, housing and community development. There's, you know, you're out there with the housing. Here you see a street in front of the house that needs something. I mean, it's just a lack of communication between all agencies that we see, and it's been just going on for too long. And because of the things that are happening now on the federal level, we really have to, you know, all this has to do with spending. And, you know, I just think that that awareness is there. I don't know if any other agency is thinking about a plan that could work with that. If you want to speak on the subject, you can at this time.
Alice Kennedy, Commissioner DHD. I think one of the items that I would just say is that we do recognize the need for increased coordination and communication. That is something that we have picked up, especially regarding the Mayor's Strategic Plan to Reduce Vacant Properties and the fact that the $3 billion capital strategy includes $1 billion for infrastructure, which is a very broad term for infrastructure. It's not just roads and pipes. It is sidewalks, ADA compliant, street corners, lighting, parks, recreation and parks, green space, commercial development as well. So trees, tree pits, it captures a number of different things. So we have been increasing that coordination so that as we create our whole block outcomes, that we are working to have an understanding of, you know, where DOT is working, what are we doing in terms of streetscaping, working with our friends at Wreckin Parks on green space and not just planning, but also construction. And one of the first things that we've started with, with DOT is the coordination on an understanding of the ADA-compliant street corners and locations for those and how we can overlap and ensure that we're leveraging each other's funding sources to move things forward.
And lastly, Madam Chair, how does graffiti play into all of this? Can anyone answer that? Because our city is having a terrible problem. You want to, before I get into that, go ahead, you wanted to add to the last question.
Sure, thank you. My name is Sean Burnett. I'm the Capital Planning Chief for Baltimore City DOT. Just very quickly on inter-agency coordination. DOT, the planning team as well as the traffic team do a lot of work with specifically BCRP, Department of Planning, as well as DHCD when it comes to connecting community members to assets. Mr. Borman and I work pretty closely on trying to establish safe connections between schools and new rec centers, trying to improve the safety of community connections between pools and other community assets. I'll also say that DOT works very closely with the Neighborhood Development Group within DHCD as well as the community planners when it comes to our impact investment areas. That's another area where we, as DOT, in this budget cycle, have expanded our, some of our flexible funds that are faced towards neighborhood traffic calming, specifically to address, kind of, and I apologize, I keep punching into the mic, but we're trying to address the sheer volume of neighborhood-level requests that we're receiving. Because the fact of the matter is, is that a lot of our neighborhoods, our communities, have safety challenges. It's a long backlog of projects that need to be addressed. And so we're trying mightily, I think, to coordinate, to increase that level of coordination, to identify those areas of kind of highest value, and then assign funds and resources to address those.
Thank you for those added comments. Very important. And then just to back up to the graffiti piece, which is on homes. It's just gotten crazy. And I know you see it. How are we resolving that issue? I've seen it grown over the years. And there's got to be, you know, there's good graffiti and there's bad graffiti in a sense. How are we tackling this?
I'll step up and start, and then look to some of my colleagues as well. So from a standpoint of graffiti, DHCD, our code enforcement team, we do enforcement in terms of citations, et cetera, on privately-owned property with graffiti where we would, you know, want to be working with the property owners to tackle, you know, the graffiti that is on their buildings. Some of them also have been advised and, you know, are turning to things like doing a mural. They're utilizing anti-graffiti coating, like a paint coating that kind of can deter graffiti from being there. And then, you know, I would turn, and that's what we do from a private standpoint, on if it's a vacant building with a vacant building notice, we can then work with DPW, you know, because they can then enter the property lines to assist us with cleaning, boarding, which could include some removal of graffiti. I would turn to my other colleagues and the other agencies. I know that this has been a part of Mayor Scott's initiatives in terms of some of the sprints that were done in terms of graffiti removal. But from some of the areas that are the public placing, public places like our bridges and other city-owned property for graffiti removal, I'd have to turn to DOT and DPW.
I'm happy to address from the DOT side of things. So we actively spend a great deal of time removing graffiti. Specifically, like when you're coming down I-83, you see the area along the wall over there where, I mean, for as quickly as we can remove it, it's back there. So we do spend a good deal of time trying to make sure that we are actively removing graffiti. One thing to note, I have actually reached out to Tanya Miller to try to figure out maybe a creative way to create like an art in transit project, if you will, so that if people want to put graffiti there, perhaps we can stylize it and make it something that is a reflection of the city and maybe work with local graffiti artists for them to create a design to put there. So just different things to maybe try to figure out how to help people try to, if either deter them from doing it or if they're going to do it, like do it in an artistic manner in a space that is not perceived as vandalism. But, you know, we actively get out and remove graffiti as we see it. It happens, obviously, faster than we can remove it, but we are addressing it.
I just wanted the general public to know because it does cost money.
It absolutely does.
And it has to be, you know, built in to this budget as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Direct, um, okay, I do have, I do have a question. You did speak about projects not being funded like they typically are from year to year to year and trying to fund projects within one year. Can you give more information about how you guys are, how you guys are making changes within the capital, within the capital budget to fund projects at one time?
Yeah, absolutely. So what I presented today was for FY '24 and '25. But in the guidance that we provided to agencies for FY '26, we included guidance that agencies should be requesting full funds for a phase of a capital project in a single fiscal year. So all of the design funds should be in a single fiscal year. All of the construction funds should be requested in a single fiscal year. And one of the reasons that we're able to put that guidance in place, starting with fiscal year '26, is because we have an increase in the local funding. So just if we go back to the trends in terms of general obligation bonds, you can see here that in FY '24 and '25, we had $80 million a year in general obligation bonds. Starting in FY '26, that increases to $125 million. So the amount available for agencies to invest in capital projects is significantly increased. It's not as much as we need, but it's significantly increased, starting in FY '26. And so we thought that that was an appropriate time to put in place this guidance so that rather than starting lots of projects and getting them partially funded, that with this additional funding, we would focus on getting projects fully funded so that they could be delivered. Now, cost estimates may be going up due to what's going on with the economy. And so, so we may have some challenges there. But based on the estimates that agencies had for projects, that was the guidance. And agencies, for the most part, followed that guidance in what they requested.
And just to make sure I understand, that's the guidance for FY '26?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Colleagues, do we have any additional questions for, okay, Councilman Gray?
There we go. With the uncertainty of products and material going up and down, I just wanted to know from each agency that is, I guess, people-facing and have projects, capital projects right now in phase for the general public, do you guys have any type of communication strategy for us? And also any plans to talk to the community to explain that, you know, this new school, new playground, new whatever is going to, we're building or we have plans to build, this is what it may look like now because of tariffs, because of uncertainty, because of grants being cut, agencies being depleted. What is your communication plan you have with us, but also with the general public? Because some people may be really excited about something that's happening and then we kind of have to pull the rug from under them and let them know that because of what's going on and uncertainty in the federal level, we're not going to be able to deliver this for you. And I would rather you guys have a plan now than to show up at a community meeting, you know, in two months and to let people know that, sorry, we may not be able to actually do what we've been talking about for the last two, three, four years.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And this is all happening in real time very rapidly. So we may not have plans yet, but I think it's a good, a good nudge to develop those. This isn't new in terms of costs escalating and projects having to request additional funding. So with COVID, we had some of the same challenges. This is maybe a different flavor of those challenges. And so some of that communication maybe exists within the agencies as they, you know, communicate with the public. So I don't know if any of the agencies want to speak to kind of how you engage with the public and how you communicate about those potential delays or changes to project scope.
I'm happy to jump in. I think that's a great question. I think we are all in the great unknown right now. I think there's been some lack of communication, especially for large grant projects. Baltimore City got the discretionary grant, a raise grant for West Baltimore United, $85.5 million for this project. We've gotten really little to no information as of right now from the feds as far as how the project will continue to move forward, if it will move forward, things like that. We're preparing just the same. We're regularly in communication with our federal elected officials about just strategizing about how we will move about if the project does move forward, if it moves forward with stipulations, or if it doesn't move forward. We do still regularly have meetings with the work group that's associated with West Baltimore United. They're publicly put up on both our website, all of our social media accounts. And so we welcome people to still participate. We still want to have very public interaction with folks about all the work that we are actively doing, whether we're at a stalemate with the federal funding or whether we will continue to move forward with the project. And as we get more information from our federal partners, we will be very forthright with delivering the information to our council, our constituents, and working, again, like I said, with our federal partners, our congressmembers and our senators to make all the necessary steps to try to ensure that we do still get our federal funding for the projects that we earned and won grant funds for.
Thank you. I think that's going to be really important. I think the community needs to know what's going on and how it's going to affect them. A lot of times you watch news, you have, you just see some, lack of a better term, some crazy guy just going up and down, walking up and down the stage saying, America is so great, but no one knows what that means, like on a local level. So please, if you guys can start working on that like yesterday, that would be amazing. But I also have a committee request, if possible. I don't know if you have it already. Could we have all capital projects broken down by districts? I think it would be really important just for us as council folks just to see exactly what the spending, what spending is happening in our districts. And overall, I think that would be really important. So that's my committee request.
And can I just ask a clarifying question? So we have that prepared for FY '26. Were you asking for that for fiscal years '24 and '25? Or you're looking?
Yes, for '24 and '25.
'24 and '25, okay. We'll need to prepare that, but we can work on that.
So just to make sure we have everything, for fiscal year '24 and '25, you guys are giving us this information, the same information, but broken down with a different section on what district it is. How long do you think that that would typically take? Or did you have a specific timeline that you wanted to request from them?
I understand that it's budget season, so I don't want to tax everyone too much. But is two weeks reasonable?
I think so. I think they're already mapped, so I don't think it will be too challenging, so we can aim for that.
Okay, one week. Thank you.
One week, okay. So one week from today, and that'll be, we have that as a committee request. Okay, let's be safe. Two weeks from today, we have it as a, we have it as a committee request. Committee members, do we have any, you have any other questions? Okay.
I do, but I won't.
No, ask your question.
No, I'm finished.
Okay, we're in recess. Everybody, thanks for joining us today. We appreciate you.